In the northeast corner of the courthouse third floor with all three members present. I'd like to have you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just a notice to the public, the Board of Supervisors welcomes comments from the public during the time allowed for discussion. You are requested to approach the microphone, state your name for the record and limit the time used to present your remarks in order that others may be given the opportunity to speak. The normal process on any agenda item is for the chairperson to read the item from the agenda. The board has given an opportunity to comment on the issue and or place a motion on the floor. An opportunity for discussion may be presented at which time the public may participate and a roll call vote will follow. First item is the approval or amendment of the agenda that has been presented.
Mr. -- go ahead, Bill.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as printed.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbar.
Yes. Moving on to the consent agenda, approve the minutes from the regular session of February nine, 2016. Number three is approve the annual manure management plan update for J.T. Farms, Farms West Side Site ID number six-three-two-oh-seven. It's an annual update report received and placed on file with the following changes made to the manure management plan. The animal unit capacity has changed and a four-year update. Item four is approve of manure management plan update from Breeze Hill Farms LLC ID number six-five-seven-seven-zero. This is an annual update report received and placed on file with the following changes made to their manure management plan. Adding acres, change crop rotation using manure analysis for determining application rates when applying manure and a four-year update. Item five, approve manure management plan update from B.L. Farms, Inc., ID number six-seven-one-four-one. This is an annual update report received and placed on file with the following changes made to the manure management plan. Change crop rotation using manure analysis for determination, determining application rates when applying manure and update the R-U-S-L-E two and P index. And item six, approve mobile band shell rental. This is a mobile band shell rental agreement that has been received from Roadhogs Bar, JTA, Inc., requesting to use the mobile band shell Saturday, June eighteenth and nineteenth in State Center, Iowa for Street Dance and the Rose Festival. And item seven, approve the claims as audited and authorize the county auditor and recorder to issue payment of same. The listing of claims paid at this meeting will be included with all claims paid for the month of February. February list of claims will be part of a first meeting in March. I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the consent agenda as printed.
Mr. Chairman, I'd second that.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbar.
Moving on to item number eight.
Yes.
Oh, excuse me. Item number eight, this is a public hearing and I will call a public meeting to order at nine-oh-three. This is a considering the adoption of an ordinance resolution, motion, or other declaration of intent to acquire by condemnation if necessary. This is a public hearing. The public hearing is open and this is for the north three-hundred, three-hundred-and-ten feet of the east three-hundred-and-sixty-eight feet of the northeast quarter, of the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter of section six, township eight-eighty-five, north range, west of the fifth PM Marshall County, Iowa. Were there any written comments presented?
No, there was not.
Were there any, any questions or objections of the individuals that are here this morning? Are there any objections? Will you have one? Okay, sir, please step up.
My name is Bertus Brockman.
State, state your name, come up to microphone. Thank you, sir. We should have brought the microphone to you.
That's all right. My name is Bertus Brockman and I was wondering if you had, when you publish these things, you would put the township in there so you would be more transparent.
I think it is. Township eighty-eighty-five, north.
I know you've got the coordinates, but I would like to see the name of the township, period. Thank you.
Anything else? Yes, sir, just step up the microphone, your name.
My name's Stephen Schwaki. My brother and I are the owners of this property and we'd like to know why you're condemning it. We've been, we have been trying to clean the property up. Last year, we took a camper out there. We were going to spend a couple of weeks and someone had gone to the power company and had our power shut off even though the bill was paid under a false name. When I called to get the power hooked back up, they said that the Board of Supervisors refused to allow us to have electricity. And I can't have a camper out there with electricity cleaning the place up without electricity.
Okay. What we'll do is bring John Kuntz up here and John has been handling it through his department. I know this has been an ongoing.
Yeah, as far as the electricity, I'm not aware of that. We don't have the authority to tell the electric company to do anything.
We, we took no action as a board.
None at all.
Someone claimed to be named Donald Schwaki signed papers at Grumby County RAC telling them to disconnect our electricity and take the power pole out. Donald Schwaki does not exist.
Okay, well, we, we didn't have anything to do with that.
That would, that would be illegal and we'd be in trouble.
But then when I called to get it hooked back up, they said that I had to talk to you, sir, because the property was in dispute and they could, could not legally hook up electricity to the property.
They, I, I haven't spoken to him and I, you should have called me. I don't have.
I don't have your phone number.
I don't have any way of knowing. Well, how did, what'd they tell you to call?
They, they told me to call you. And whenever I tried the office, they'd tell me you weren't in. They'd tell me to leave you a message and I never got a call back.
If you're calling my number, there's nobody but me that answers the phone.
Okay.
So I don't know who you called, but it wasn't me.
I double-checked the county's website because I called the number that's on there.
For which office?
Planning and zoning commission office.
Okay, well, I don't have any phone calls ever received and nobody answers my phone. It's just me. So the board has a secretary we share an office, but you'd have to call the board's number to talk to her. Nobody answers my phone but me. So first of all, we don't have anything to do with electricity. I'd be happy to talk to them, but I'm not sure why they want us to do anything. But I understand if the, if it's in condemnation proceedings, they wouldn't want to get involved with it. So from that end, I, I can understand it, although I don't understand why there, if, if nobody even exists named that and that person doesn't have any legal right to do anything with your property. I don't understand how they took the electricity away in the first place, so.
I, I don't either.
Do you have a contact that you're speaking with or dealing with there?
It's been a while. I'll be honest with you, over the winter time, I wasn't too worried about trying to get electricity hooked back up.
If you would pass along that information, I'd be happy to call them and ask them what they need.
We're, we're trying to get the place cleaned up, but when the electricity's getting shut off is.
When, when was the electricity supposedly shut off by us? Because we did nothing.
It, it was this past spring and we got there.
A year ago?
Yeah, a year ago, this past spring.
Okay.
Two thousand fifteen.
Okay.
The power pole was gone. All the electrical wiring coming down from the power pole that was buried was cut off below ground level. And the power company said that it was requested by Donald Schwaki. There is no such person.
We hadn't started any proceedings.
No, this didn't start until.
When I, when I called them, it was probably March of two thousand fifteen to get it hooked back, the power kind of reconnected. They said that the property was in dispute with the county, with Marshall County and that they could not do anything without a letter from you guys.
It wouldn't have been in dispute then.
We didn't start this until December.
Okay.
So I don't know, that had nothing to do with us. We weren't, you weren't under condemnation, you weren't under anything. It was, I don't know how, what happened to happen, but it didn't have anything to do with any kind of dispute and how they would know it was under dispute would be beyond me.
I would say then that whoever did go in and claimed to be an owner of the property or whatever they claimed, this person who claimed to be Donald Schwaki.
Donovan.
Oh, Donovan, sorry.
I, I think your dispute with this is between you and the utility company in another county because it has absolutely nothing to do with this body.
Okay, but my dispute with property being condemned is with you.
Right. That, that is with us.
Before we close the other issue, get me in a contact number and I will be happy to talk to someone and I'll be.
I, I can't take a camper out there with no electricity.
Understood.
Because I can't get the light out to come out to my deal without it.
And as far as the condemnation, part of the reason we began the process is, first of all, we dealt with your uncle on this for, you know, how many years? Almost fifteen years. And seeing that once it went to you, plus the fact that, to our knowledge, the property had never transferred to anybody for months and so we weren't.
We've been trying. Our lawyer had sent up a petition to get it transferred four times before it finally came back.
Okay, well, all we knew is every time we'd look at the legal or legal information, the owner was still your Uncle John. And so as far as we knew, nothing was happening and it had been basically the same condition for months. And then I discussed it with the board and we just decided, we dealt with this for so long, we didn't know if it was ever going to be over, that we just would go ahead with the condemnation procedures, do the cleanup and then put it back up for sale for the cost of the cleanup. So that's why this is all happening. We don't have any interest in the property. We don't want it. It's not, we're not going to make money on this or anything. We just want to get it cleaned up. So if we can, this is going to take a long period. It's not going to be over in a minute. So while the process is going forward, get me your information. I'll be happy to work on this and see what we can do. And if we can get you guys out there and cleaning it up, then maybe we don't have to proceed with all of this, but.
I would really rather you did not.
I can certainly understand that.
I've got to stop down at the Treasury's office before I leave because I, I would have thought that since, I'm sure you've got. Well, this letter I hear, Serge, you've got my address, but I haven't gotten the tax statement, so I'm worried that.
Well, that letter came from my office. I don't know about the Treasurers.
Yeah, so I'm a little, I'm a little worried that I am behind on taxes.
Well, there, there's, those are some other issues that we may have to, you'll have to talk to them about down at the Treasurer's office, but for our part, you and I can, if everybody's done, we can go into my office, I can get you my card and we can do some of this.
Do we want to?
Just go ahead with the mo, if you, whatever you're going to do, just continue and do it. We have plenty of time to stop.
Can we still rescind it?
Yeah, we don't have to ever, we, at any time we can stop.
In order to get it moving on the way it needs to be, because it does say if necessary.
Right.
In this, in order to keep it moving and keep it going, we have, we actually have to do what we have to do today.
Right, and then in the future, if it, we've still got to go through the whole process of having it appraised. The condemnation board has to hold a separate hearing to see what they value the property as. There's a long time yet before this is going to be resolved.
So they, they still would technically have control of the property if everything comes together?
Yeah, we don't take anything until it's all finally done.
Getting, getting things in motion is what, basically what this is doing.
Okay.
And then now, and, and in my brief time here, I know there's been a timeline put on this for cleanup in the past and it's been completely ignored. And so I guess if.
Unfortunately, I, I've paid people to come out and help clean up and they show up for one day and never show up again. I spent a full week by myself cleaning up the property.
I was there for six weeks.
Well, it, it's still not getting done, you know, and, and, and I think what we'll do is we'll, we'll, we'll proceed here however it is voted here and then that way, you know, I guess you can get things cleaned up a little bit on the electrical thing because we've got no responsibility, no, no. We didn't do anything on the electrical thing. It just happened. But it also, in my mind, you've had a year to come up and present this to us, to him, and that hasn't been done. If this happened last March and, you know, just to get things.
I've got a full-time job and I live ten miles away.
And we understand that, but if you've got something you want to say, you can come up and state your name, please.
I'm over there a week all summer.
Well, I, and I realize that and, and we understand that, but, but it's still not cleaned up.
Non Schwaki. I was over there with mowing. We had people stealing stuff off the property. We called the sheriff. We're told, oh, we were told it's an abandoned property. People can take what they want.
Okay, well, like I say, we're, 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 we're going to proceed here with this and that you guys are still, you know, still, it's not done yet.
My brother died January third and my husband died April fourteenth. We were there in March for two weeks. I took off till the end of May. We were there another ten days. July, went back over and was there for seven weeks. It's not like we're not over there working. And then la, not this last summer, but the summer fif, summer.
Okay, well, well, like I say, we're going to proceed and then we'll get things straightened out. Hopefully we can get it resolved. We'll try to get things resolved for you. Any other, any other comments, questions? Hearing or seeing none, I will call for the motion to close the hearing at nine-seventeen.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we close the hearing at nine-seventeen.
Mr. Chairman, I'd second that.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbar.
Yes. All right, moving on to number nine, resolution number twenty-sixteen dash zero-zero-zero-seven. This is a resolution of intent to acquire parcel by condemnation if necessary.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a comment before we make any motions on this. I think a key words to remember here are if necessary. I think that coupled with the fact that listening to our individual from the zoning portion, Mr. Kuntz, that this has been an ongoing problem for several years and has not been addressed. I believe in going along that line that this resolution would be a very strong incentive for action on this property to be taken in a timely fashion and get a good resolution for the benefit of all parties involved. And because of that, I would like to make a motion that we adopt resolution number twenty-sixteen dash zero-zero-zero-seven, which is a resolution of intent to acquire parcel by condemnation, and I'm going to stress if necessary.
Mr. Chairman, I'd second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbar.
Yes. All right, thank you. All right, moving on to item number ten. I will declare the public hearing open at nine-eighteen for the two thousand fifteen sixteen budget amendment. Why don't, why don't we take it outside so we can continue our meeting, please? Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. Any resident may present objections to or argue in favor of any part of the amendment to the current two thousand fifteen sixteen budget. Were there any written comments that were sent in?
No, there were no written comments.
Of the sixteen people here, any, any comments, objections, discussions? Seeing none. I would make a motion, or I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing at nine-nineteen.
Mr. Chairman, I would so move.
Chuck, show us what's going on. Is that due what did these by the?
Sorry.
We got a motion. Need a second?
I will second that.
And a second. Roll call, please.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbar.
Yes. All right, item number eleven, resolution number twenty-sixteen dash zero-zero-zero-eight, two thousand fifteen sixteen budget amendment. This is a proposed two thousand fifteen sixteen budget amendment that was published in March Town Times Republican and the State Center Mid-Iowa Enterprise on February eleventh. Were there any written comments?
No, there was no written comments.
Of the six, of the fourteen people now, any individuals attending the public meeting, any comments, oral comments, questions or objections to the hearing? Therefore not be resolved by the Marshall County Board of Supervisors that the two thousand fifteen sixteen county budget amendment be adopted and the county auditor recorder be authorized to clarify and file the budget amendment and pub, as published and presented at the hearing. This is dated twenty-third day of February two thousand sixteen. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move we adopt resolution two-oh-one-six dash zero-zero-zero-eight, two thousand fifteen sixteen budget amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that adoption.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbar.
Yes. All right, moving on to item number twelve is resolution number twenty-sixteen dash zero-zero-zero-nine. This is reappraisal of funds for fiscal year two thousand fifteen sixteen. These are estimated appropriations by the board for the various funds and the departments in the county. Scroll down and, and see what reappraisal have been made. And this is dated the, March Town Iowa, this twenty-third day of February two thousand sixteen. I would entertain a motion on resolution twenty-sixteen dash zero-zero-zero-nine.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we adopt resolution number twenty-sixteen dash zero-zero-zero-nine, reappraisal of funds for the fiscal year two thousand fifteen dash sixteen.
Mr. Chairman, I'd second that.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbar.
Yes. All right, item number thirteen, this is a public hearing. I will call a public hearing to order at nine-twenty-two. This is a lease purchase of equipment and this is at, at this public hearing, any resident may present objects to or arguments in favor of the lease purchase agreement for Marshall County Secondary Roads. Were there any written comments that were turned in?
No, there were not.
Any individuals, the fourteen individuals here, any comments, questions or objections? Seeing none, hearing none. I will, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing at nine-twenty-two.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we close the hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I will second that.
All right, we've got a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Roll call, please.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbar.
Yes. All right, moving on to item number fourteen, resolution twenty-sixteen dash zero-zero-one-zero. This is a lease purchase agreement and certification, certification of debt where the Marshall County engineer has determined the need to purchase equipment to allow for in-house repair replacement of county-owned infrastructure. And I'll call on Paul Geilert, their county engineer to explain, talk about, who's next, this item.
This, this lease purchases, so we can purchase a, an excavator. We don't currently own an excavator that is a track excavator that gives us the digging capacity to be able to replace some of our own box culverts with, with precast units that we've been able to do. We have in the past rented excavators to do this work. We selected this size excavator because it gives us the most capacity, but it's still a unit that we can legally haul with our tractor-trailer unit that we have, that we already own. It, it's going to, it's going to work a lot of hours for us this, in the next couple of decades and it's going to be a unit that we can keep for quite a while. One of the reasons that I, that I wanted to pursue lease purchase is that we can acquire this unit without not moving forward with the other units as far as trucks and motor graders that we have on a, on kind of a schedule to get replaced and so it doesn't hamper that effort while we can increase our, our excavating capacity.
Oh, I just wanted to be sure that the lease agreement, that there's no actual buyout at the end. It's the same each year clear to the end?
Yes, it's a lease purchase and after five payments, it is our, our unit.
What have we spent in the past on an annual basis when we have rented this equipment?
It's, it's varied with the size of the unit that we rent and how long we've had them because we've rented them for a month or rented them for two months, but we've spent, you know, upwards of, you know, ten to fifteen thousand dollars in rent at different times. But a lot of that was to decide what size fits us best and what size our operators are comfortable with.
Now, it's going to be my, my next question. We do have operators for this equipment.
Very skilled, yes. We, we have, we have guys that need the tools.
This will be used to finish up the, the project out there at the Crooked Bridge?
No, we will never see that project.
I will see, you, you're not going to do the call for the Crooked Bridge?
No, no.
Oh, okay. Oh, golly.
That's going to be a bridge.
Oh, okay.
It's still going to be crooked, but it's going to be a bridge.
No, I thought, but there's a, there's a little bridge to the east.
There is a, there is a culvert, there is a, a culvert just to the east of, and, and we will likely replace that.
That's the last bridge.
Okay. That's not the Crooked Bridge, though. That's.
It's to the east. Okay.
All right, I would entertain a motion on this resolution twenty-sixteen dash zero-zero-ten. This is a lease purchase agreement and certification, certification of debt, certification of debt, excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we adopt resolution number twenty-sixteen dash zero-zero-one-zero, lease purchase agreement and certification of debt.
Mr. Chairman, I'd second that.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Discussion? I, I guess I'm just going to, you know, I guess we'll kick this thing around a little and then are we able to do this with, with our budget and where we're at?
This is going to allow the engineer to spread this payment out over five different budgets. And in the discussions that, that I've held with him, that this is, will allow him to stay within his equipment spending. It's not additional spending. It's just breaking it down so he stays within his equipment replacement budget.
And like he's saying, he's, he's paying rent anyway, where, where we can probably take half of that if we're looking at twenty thousand. You know, half of that can go for, for payment of this.
All payments to this, to this lease will be made out of my equipment budget.
You know, in, in the past, we've been spending ten to twenty thousand dollars in rent and his, his payment is going to be approximately fifty thousand. But he, but at the end of a five-year period, he's got a piece of equipment that is going to be able to be used for several more years.
Probably another ten years beyond that, maybe.
It's a piece of equipment that's going to be used three hundred and sixty-five days a year, not for just a couple of months that we may be renting it. So from that standpoint, it's a, it's a very prudent financial decision.
Well, I was impressed there's no buyout at the end because a regular business who pays taxes to the federal government does not allow that. You've got a, you've got a balloon payment at the end, so I, this, this, this is, this is a, a thing that I think is going to work.
The, the other thing to remember too is that there's times with, with our increased use and doing more of the box culverts, there would be times of the year when we would be looking to rent an excavator. There may not be one available around here to rent because it'd be in the, in the high times of the construction and they may be rented, so.
Is this also going to assist us in ditch cleaning?
It, it's not going to do much ditch cleaning. I do see this, this lease purchase working to where we can purchase another excavator and do this again and have that unit basically be dedicated to cleaning ditch. My opinion right now is that we need two units out there dedicated to cleaning ditch for about ten years to get, to get even, you know, close to caught up. Okay.
All right. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbar.
Yes. All right, moving on to item number fifteen. This is a public hearing for the two thousand sixteen seventeen. I'll call the public hearing to order at nine-twenty-nine. Any resident may present objections or two or arguments in favor of any part of the proposed budget. Dan, was there any written?
No written.
Nine.
Nine? Nine?
You're losing your audience.
Don't comment.
No comments, okay. All right, of the nine individuals that are here, any attend, attend the public hearing or any individuals that want to present oral comments, questions or objections?
I would like to.
Okay.
You got time?
Whatever you can say in thirty seconds, go right ahead.
Stand up there.
Yeah, let's do, let's.
I can't hear, you're not very good anyway.
That's all right. The world can.
But I noticed some, some of the things have been, been. Uh, but, but I notice, uh, so, some of the things have been, been, uh, great for the, uh, budget hearing, and you've worked hard at that. But I see, you know, you give fifty thousand dollars to the, uh,
Medic.
Chamber of Commerce, right?
Medic.
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 That's for economic development.
The, the fifty thousand, does that give you a, a membership on the, uh, uh, board of, uh?
We, we do serve on the board, on the medic board, yeah.
You, you, you get a free membership then. Is that right?
Oh, I, I guess, if you wanna say that, yeah, that's, I, I get the opportunity, get up at seven o'clock every morning, and then go to their meetings, yes.
Yeah, well, a- anyway, I was wondering where that fifty thousand was from.
But it also, it also develops in economic, economic development.
Yeah, for economic development.
Yes.
Whatever that is. Then, uh, you got another fifty-two thousand. I don't know what that's, uh, supposed to do as, as you go over that total of a hundred and two thousand. Where does the other fifty-two thousand go?
For, uh, community development?
Yes.
Uh, part of that is...
Economic development.
Well, economic development or community?
It's still on the same line. It's still on the same line.
It's two different lines.
If you've got a pair.
Yes, uh, some of that are monies that we have to put into funds that, uh, whether we spend it or not, allows, uh, institutions to get passed through grants. If, if we don't, if we don't put the money in our budget, they, they can't, they can't get a grant. Uh, some of that has to do with, uh, uh, things such as, uh, David Hicks, help me out.
Youth and shelter services.
Youth and shelter services. Uh, some of it has had to do in the past with grants that have gone to the school system. Uh, it's not necessarily that we spend that money, but if we don't fund it, they cannot apply for the grants.
Well, before, let's say in fifteen, you give a hundred and fifty-three thousand, you know, you brought some of it down, at least.
Uh, in previous years, part of that under community development, uh, those monies have gone to, uh, Common Bond, I believe. Last budget or the previous budget got approximately sixty-six thousand dollars, which was twelve hundred and fifty dollars per unit when they redeveloped the Tallcorn Project. That has been a standard practice that the board has set before the three of us who are sitting here of anybody that's going to do these types of developments for low and moderate income housing, uh, gets twelve hundred and fifty dollars. And that, uh, also comes out of our Low and Moderate Income Housing Fund.
Yeah, that's twelve hundred and fifty dollars per.
Per unit.
Per unit, yeah.
Uh, in, in the past, uh, there have been, uh, the City Estate Center had, uh, a development that I think did, how many units over there? Was it six or seven?
Not even that many.
And then, uh, Common Bond did approximately forty, uh, forty, forty-some. But that's, that's where those monies were in previous years.
Okay, now, the bridges and culverts will slide over to Area Seven, and you got, uh, increase of, uh, let's see, from eighty-seven thousand from this year until, well, until fifteen to three hundred and eighty thousand. Is that, is that include, that probably does the gas tax brings in?
That's where some of the revenue that serves that expenditure is coming from.
Ten percent gas tax for the boundaries?
Those are, those are pre-cast box culverts that were, that were installed.
But that's, that's where the money, money did come from, right? Ex- extra.
Six hundred and thirty thousand dollars this year.
Okay.
Additional Revenue on the Road Use Fund.
Right.
That, that comes from the DOT through the state.
Now, now, the, uh, the rural is ten dollars and something per thousand for the roads. And what, and what is the cities, they pay what, three tenths of a percent or something, or three cents or thirty cents of what? Give, give me the deals there.
I don't know anything about city.
Well, how, how much taxation, and I'm talking about taxation on road use for, uh, the rural people, the rural others.
Rural Services?
You're talking about rural basic.
Which part of the fund are you talking? General, general, basic or rural services?
Well, that'd be just right, start out, right, for the rural roads.
Well, the vast majority of the rural roads are funded out of rural services.
Okay. And how, what is the rate? You, you go up to ten something per thousand, ten dollars per thousand.
Okay.
Okay, somewhere in there. I'm, and I'm asking you, you're the ones that set that.
Well, we, we set the budget for, for it, but I'm not aware of how much you can actually charge for it.
Well, you can only go ten point something. And in the cities, it's only a small part.
Well, we don't, the, the city is not in the equation on this.
No, I know that.
The, the city's budget is theirs as far as roads.
But it's still, still that part is income for the total tax people. And I just was.
That, that's, that's what you see in the bottom of your tax receipt that you get on your, on your farmland.
Yeah.
It show, it shows what the county is, then it also shows what the town is. And it breaks it out at a percent.
And what are you, what, what's the taxing this year?
Well, county, county tax, taxing.
Yeah.
We, the levy stays the same.
Oh. J- just so I understand exactly what you're asking here, are, are you looking at the proposed levy rate for urban and rural?
I have new equipment.
The ten dollars and five cents?
Is that what it is?
He's got the.
I'm just asking.
See, you're asking individual line items, and what the information I have is a compilation of everything for the budget. But if, if you're looking at rural levy, it's ten dollars and five cents.
Okay. How's that?
That is per thousand.
And, uh, that makes it to, uh, capital projects, you're spending five hundred thousand, half a million. What is your roadway construction? Says capital projects, you're budgeting.
Okay, the capital.
For secondary roads, you're budgeting five hundred thousand.
Capital.
Half a million.
Are you on building capital now?
I don't know.
Okay, 'cause you're, you're picking out individual line items.
I'm looking on area number zero.
Which one is it?
Let me see what you have here, Verdis. Do you have the actual, okay, you've got the actual line items of the budget.
Mm-hmm.
He, he's got the non-program expense, the non-program expenditure.
I do.
He's got the zero two one zero conservation, no, wait a minute, roadway construction.
Right.
You got under capital projects, roadway construction under capital projects. And that's five hundred thousand is what we've got in that.
Okay.
And that, that's, that's part of the...
That's gonna be the paving projects, whether they are asphalt or concrete for the following year coming up?
If that's our local construction, that's what I put in for lost money. Okay, that's our, that's bridges, but it's, it's local.
Local, is that on bridges then?
Local bridges funded with local option sales tax.
Okay.
Which half of the local option sales tax money goes towards the bridges and culverts and/or inspections or repair and replacement of such.
I was, I was gonna ask you questions on the leases, however, Dave, uh, give me that part, so I won't, uh, give any further, uh, because you passed that. But, uh, I wasn't gonna, otherwise I had some questions for that, too.
Okay.
Uh.
Well, if you've got questions, you ask them.
Okay, the next thing is, I believe that you have the, uh, total carryover is, uh, and back in, uh, oh, twenty, yeah, no, fifteen, twenty, twenty fifteen, when it ended, you had about ten thousand, or ten million carryover. That's right on the bottom here.
Mm-hmm.
And now you've got the carryover down because you got more money last, this, this past year, uh, in than you budgeted for, and, uh, that's nice. But now you've got eight million, three oh four, but you's gonna have more carryover than that. And that figures about, uh, thirty-one percent. And maybe you could, uh, lower that about a million.
Well, that's, that's a little misleading.
Well, not, not in my mind. I, I know how that works, so you don't have to explain.
I understand, but...
Maybe you can explain to the rest of them.
S- some of those dollars that are in there, uh, have to do with what's in the mental health.
Sure.
Portion of the budget that, that skews that slightly. But, uh, our, our true operating carryovers are, are not thirty-four percent.
What are they?
Uh, in which particular fund?
No, in, in the total, in the total budget.
Well, total budget.
It's right here.
On paper, it is that amount. But in, in general basic, then you have your, your, your other funds. Some, some of those funds operate around, like in, in rural services, I believe Paul, when he was done with this budget, you're gonna come in at around fifteen?
Probably a little higher.
Oh, fif- fifteen to eighteen percent in rural services. Uh, general basic, we're, we're hovering around twenty-one percent.
Now, Verdis, you understand why we have the carryovers?
Oh, I've, I've understood it for twelve years, so you know.
Not, not everyone may not.
But we're, we're not exactly what you would call flush with money, if that's where you're getting at.
Well, you can, you can, uh, spend a little, uh, little bit less, uh, on secondary roads, because it, it's, uh, getting to the point where I can't believe in the last three years that all the fence has been piled up with snow and it's been pushed down. And, uh, I, that's, uh, that's a problem, too.
So, Verdis, would, am I hearing you tell me that you want us to spend less on the secondary roads?
Well, you can pull, pull back, uh, dumping it on the people's property. That's, that's a, that's different, but it's good, could take a look.
Okay.
However, however, I still can lower the taxes down to my good friend Lloyd Smith, who was a state auditor, says fifteen percent carryovers is enough. And, uh, I'll give you twenty percent, and that is about a million less.
Our auditors that, that, our independent auditors come in, are telling us twenty percent. Because you need, you need that money from the first of July until taxes come in again.
That isn't very far. A lot of people pay taxes fully. You'd be surprised.
Well, they don't come in until, what?
Fully, they pay the whole year.
Okay, anything else?
I think, uh,
Got our cover?
I think, still think you should, uh, lower the, uh, taxes about a million. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Verdis.
You'll, you can help me back to my chair.
Need help?
We'll get you back.
I think you should have had a chair here. I had a lean on the, the table here, and I hope that I didn't get near my road.
Need help? Yep.
No.
Any other comments, questions, concern? Jared?
Jared Heil, Marshall County Treasurer. Question on, uh, looking at the service Area Seven. Gas tax this year, do we know what's, that's projected to bring us in this year?
Yeah, we're figuring.
About six hundred and seventy thousand?
Six thirty, six thirty-eight or something.
Six thirty?
Six thirty. Okay. Um, looking at the budget that was passed last year, um, for the secondary roads was six million, fifty-four thousand. And the reestimate was six thousand, seven hundred and fifteen, which makes sense, that six thirty-five number of the gas tax. This budget is six million, five hundred and ninety-three, which is a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars less than last year. So would that equate that the gas tax has allowed us to do more things and yet decrease taxes, in a sense?
I, basically, when we, when we, when we went through Paul and his budget, that, that is what, uh, had come up, and we talked about. We're able to do more with less money, you know, because of that gas tax. I think that's...
It also has our utilization of local option sales tax in there, too, that's total, you know, and it's just what I'm able, what I'm seeing that we're gonna use in, from lost as well.
Okay, and then... There's several other reasons why there's less spendings. You know, a, a portion of it is the fact that we've had our revenues increase as far as the city releasing TIF valuations, uh, both in the City of Marshalltown and State Center. We've had an additional five percent revenue increase of valuations that have come on for the, uh, one portion of the Laurel Wind Farm and one portion of the Vienna Wind Farm. Uh, those have, uh, increased our revenue. There has been a change in the per person levy for mental health that has been reduced by the region this year, which has, uh, added to a reduction of the levy. Uh, I believe last year's levy was approximately ten dollars and sixty-nine cents, and this year we're looking at approximately ten dollars and five cents. So you're, you're looking at about a sixty-four cent reduction in, in the levy rate per thousand.
That's pretty good stuff. Is there, is there a particular line item within service Area Seven that the gas tax, um, is supposed to only go to? Or is it pretty much free-reign in the entire budget of the service Area Seven?
No, the gas tax is, is directed towards, uh, ridge and road improvement, but correct me.
Paul can. Equipment?
It is the, uh, it was the intent of the legislature that the increased revenue from field tax goes to investments in infrastructure. Now...
It's kind of odd.
It is, and the thing is, is can we make the argument that buying an excavator is an investment in infrastructure? I can. I don't know if that follows the intent of the legislature, but buying what we're, our increased spending on pre-cast box culverts is definitely an investment in infrastructure. And, and it's, they wanna know, and we're reporting back to them at, at the state what our, what our increases have been as far as, you know, if you increase rock on a rock road, that's still an investment in your infrastructure, given that it's maintenance.
We're, we're using it for not new, but to repair, you know, infrastructure that needs repairing and to improve what we have. Unlike the state.
Highway Conning.
Which, rather than replace what is currently in place, has done, like Denny said, uh, the expansion of the Highway twenty-four lane, which is brand-new construction, uh, we're using it for bridges and roads as we believe the intent of the, the law was.
Good. Um, and I, obviously, the only reason I'm, I'm really looking at this is, we brought it up before, some of our gravel roads need some attention out there. And, and it was good to see that there's a, a two-point-five percent increase for the roads line item from last year, um, which is a fifty-three thousand dollar increase, which is, which is good to see. Uh, I see the bridge, bridge and culverts went up, um, at four hundred and fifty thousand, then it reduced back down to two forty, probably level out what the project needs, which is good. Um, the only unfortunate thing was I saw that there was thirty-five, or thirty-seven thousand dollar increase in administration, which is a nine point seven, a nine-point-five percent increase, and eighty-four thousand dollar increase to engineering, which I'm not really sure what that is, but, um, that's a twenty-one point six percent increase. And seeing those increases versus the small increases for roads and bridge, roads and bridges, um, is just slightly concerning, 'cause I'm not sure if that was what the intent was for the gas tax, although it is good to see that, uh, we are making some progress and was able to lower the amount that it would have been spent by the county if we didn't have the gas tax. I mean, it's, maybe I'm, maybe I'm picking too much at things, um, but those are just a couple of things I noticed, and, uh, the other thing...
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't infer that the gas, that we use the gas tax for administration costs. That's, that's not what we're trying to do.
I know, but I just saw that there was, there was an increase by that percentage.
Okay.
Um, when you had a six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar increase of...
Correlation.
Yeah.
Okay.
You, you probably wanna note, too, that our consulting engineering costs are all... You probably wanna note too that our consulting engineering costs are also in that engineering, and I pay consultants to do special designs on bridges that are not...
I wondered if that's what that was, okay.
So there's a lot of that.
It's not what you would call in-house administration. It is the consulting and the engineering of the projects.
Okay, good, good.
Again, I think too, to make note, the bottom line is still less than last year.
Yeah.
So, you know, we're working, actually lowering the budget, and again, getting more done with last month.
That's good. All right, that was all I had. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, definitely. Anything else? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing. I entertain a motion to close the public hearing at nine fifty-one.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I will second that.
And a motion is second. Roll call please.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbauer.
Yes. All right, moving on, item number sixteen, resolution twenty sixteen dash zero zero one one. This is elected official salaries for twenty sixteen seventeen. The Marshall County Compensation Board that meets annually to recommend a compensation schedule for an elected official for the fiscal year immediately following in accordance with Iowa Codes three thirty-one point nine oh five and three thirty-one point nine oh seven. Listed is the equation that was come up with, that the Compensation Board came up with on January eighteenth, and this is the recommendations. After reviewing the recommendations, and the Marshall County Board of Supervisors approved the following salary, and you'll see what proposed a four-point-eight percent increase, supervisors had elected to go with an approved increase of two percent. And I guess we'll just open it up. I would entertain a motion for this resolution twenty sixteen zero zero one one. This is a little redundancy, actually.
Yeah, we're having to do this because of changes in the state legislature on how many times this has to be proposed, spoken about, and voted on.
I just want everyone to understand that.
It's actually making it into a resolution.
Right.
Where before we never had to do that.
We didn't have to do that.
So we're just kinda backtracking and making sure.
And this is the first year we've had to do this.
This is the first year.
Yes.
So next year, when we do...
Next year, we will be doing a resolution.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
And this is to satisfy the state and the new reporting regulations.
If they're happy, we're happy.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to adopt resolution two sixteen dash zero zero one one.
Mr. Chairman, I would second that.
Can I comment?
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion, comments?
I think you've done a good, very good job on the salaries and so forth, being that was in line with high taxation and water rails as it's going on now. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vertus.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbauer.
Yes. Moving on, item number seventeen, resolution twenty sixteen dash zero zero one two, to adopt the budget and certify taxes for fiscal year twenty sixteen and seventeen. The proposed twenty sixteen seventeen county budget was published in March Town Times Republican, State Center, Mid Iowa Enterprise on February eleventh, twenty sixteen. And were there any written comments that were presented, no written comments? Any objections, any individuals that are here that would like to present oral comments and questions on objections at the hearing? Not seeing any. All right, now, I would therefore be resolved with the county budget for fiscal year twenty sixteen seventeen. And I guess, is that part of the motion line? No. And the county auditor recorder authorized, certify, and file the budget and certificate of taxes as adopted. I would entertain a motion on this resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we adopt resolution number twenty sixteen dash zero zero one one. Adopt the budget and certify taxes for the fiscal year twenty sixteen dash seventeen.
Mr. Chairman, I'd second that.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbauer.
Yes. Okay, moving on, item number eighteen, this is a request to renumber previously adopted resolution. Discussion and action to renumber resolution twenty sixteen dash zero 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 four, assess taxable values of utility companies adopted at the January twenty-sixth, twenty sixteen Board of Supervisors Public Meeting to resolution number twenty sixteen dash zero zero four dash one. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to rename resolution two sixteen zero 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 four, assess taxable values of utility companies adopted at the January twenty-sixth, two thousand sixteen Board of Supervisors Meeting to resolution two thousand sixteen dash zero zero four dash one.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? And this is just kind of some housekeeping, that we renumbered, we numbered a resolution wrongly, and we're just straightening things out, I guess. Roll call please.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbauer.
Yes. Item number nineteen, secondary road equipment lease purchase, discussion and possible action to approve the purchase of one twenty sixteen John Deere two-ten G L C F T four excavator for Murphy Tractor and Equipment Company in Des Moines. Purchase price is one hundred ninety-nine thousand four ninety-six, which will consist of five annual payments in the amount of forty-three thousand nine thirty-three twenty-five each. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would motion that we approve the lease purchase of a twenty sixteen John Deere two-ten G L C F T four excavator for Murphy Tractor and Equipment Company in Des Moines, and the purchase price is one hundred ninety-nine thousand four hundred ninety-six dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I'd second that.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbauer.
Yes. Item number twenty, secondary road equipment purchase, discussion and possible action to approve the purchase of a Kent FX two-seventy-five QTV hydraulic breaker for Murphy Tractor and Equipment Company from Des Moines. The purchase is forty-three thousand eight seventy-one. Paul, I'll call on you to explain what this is.
This is a breaker attachment that will be coupled to the end of the excavator when we're removing box culverts that we're replacing. It's really just an oversized jackhammer that allows us to break up that concrete and get the old structure out of there quicker.
So this is a new piece of equipment to go on a new piece of...
It's an attachment for the excavator, yes, and it's, it will only be used with the excavator, but if you have other excavators or other equipment that has similar hydraulic flow, it could be used with other equipment as well. We have a Kent breaker that is on our John Deere backhoe that works great, but it's not optimal for the rate of hydraulic flow that... So it works, but it doesn't work right with the new excavator. So this is the unit that is sized properly for the excavator.
And you're staying within your equipment replacement budget for this year with this additional purchase?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we approve the purchase of a Kent FX two-seventy-five QTV hydraulic breaker for Murphy Tractor and Equipment Company in Des Moines, Iowa. Purchase price, forty-three thousand eight seventy-one.
Mr. Chairman, I will second that.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbauer.
Yes. And item number twenty-one, secondary road equipment purchase, discussion and possible action to approve the purchase of a twenty sixteen Kent HP two-ten hydraulic compactor for Murphy Tractor. And can't they just throw something in? You know, if you're buying, if you're spending over two hundred thousand, they'll throw something at you or something.
We didn't spend over two hundred thousand, we only spent one ninety-nine, four ninety-six.
Yes, I seen that. And what is this?
This is a similar, you know, it's an attachment, but it's a plate compactor, so when we're backfilling the box culverts, we'll put the material in lifts and compact lifts, and what we'll do is help with future differential settlement after we put the road in. You've all seen where we put, if you put box culvert in, you get a little dip on each side of where that box culvert's at, and this will hopefully prevent a lot of that.
Can't throw anything in? Can't, don't they throw something in?
They already did.
They already did.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the purchase of a twenty sixteen Kent HP two-ten hydraulic compactor for Murphy Tractor and Equipment Company in Des Moines, Iowa. The purchase price is twelve thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I'd second that.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Patton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbauer.
Yes. All right, thanks, Paul. We're looking forward to, I guess, I'll just call a public forum order sometime set aside for the public to take, make comments on topics of county business other than those listed on this agenda, and I'll actually be taking on any of these topics brought up in the public forum. And I'll just, before Harold gets up here, I'll just say, I'm looking forward to seeing this new piece of equipment, and...
I've got some more.
Well, we got somebody else who needs to talk first. Then you can talk, Vertus.
Harold Laning, I was here at the last meeting, and when the Trails Incorporated made their presentation and asking for money, and you turned that down, and I thank you very much, that was a very wise decision you made. However, I do have a question in regard to a in-kind contribution. And I wanna hear what your definition of an in-kind contribution would be.
Well, we did not make a commitment. We said that in the future, if they had any grants coming up, and they had a request for some possible in-kind contribution, that we would look at it at that time, but there were no commitments made. That in-kind contribution would possibly be some usage of staff and equipment from possibly the conservation budget, and if it was a larger piece of equipment, possibly an in-kind contribution of equipment from our engineering.
Okay, that's kinda what I thought, now...
But there was, we did not authorize anything. We said if they needed an in-kind in the future, that we would cover that at that time.
I thought that was your definition, or would be the definition.
Yeah, no monetary funds whatsoever.
Let me just comment on that in-kind contribution. Paul, as you know, I've, over two years ago or more, I've talked to you about our road on Bynan Avenue, how the ditch needs to be dug out. The water runs down the road and makes a rut. I've got two neighbors that have culverts that are completely plugged up and so forth. And the response was, we don't have the manpower and we don't have the equipment to do ditches and those kinda things. And I'm not just, you know, calling you, that's not true. But if we don't have the manpower and we don't have the equipment to do the necessary road maintenance that desperately needs to be done, we sure as hell don't have it to work on bike trails and so forth with county equipment and county personnel. I don't want my tax dollars used for that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, Vertus, if you wanna stay at the chair, that's fine, I don't want you...
Okay, I'll speak loud enough.
About something we haven't spoken about before.
Right. One of the things in this budget is the extension service has their own budget, just like you do. Only they have it at seven-thirty in the morning, so I can't get there, but that's all right. You've also given them fifteen thousand dollars for four H, but that should be all included in whatever they do at the extension, and the county should not have to give them another fifteen thousand just for that.
Well, I think if...
It's not quite that way.
It's not quite that way. Actually, what we're doing is, that fifteen thousand, I think four thousand dollars goes to the extension office. Of that fifteen, ten thousand dollars goes to the fair board, the Central Iowa Fair, and a thousand is listed as, whether they're my trophies.
Yes.
And ribbons for the fair activities.
Yeah, ten thousand is for actual buildings and grounds maintenance, four thousand is for judges, and one thousand of that fifteen thousand dollars is for trophies.
Well, mainly, you shouldn't really have to give that much because they should be taking care of that. But that's my opinion, okay? And then the road thing, I think it needs looking at, and I have a lot of people are not very happy with the three percent, six percent, nine percent middle. You gotta drive down the middle of your road, and I've got a lot of people that have brought that up to me. And I think it's about time we flatten out some things and get the cemetery deal done because if they keep tearing up this roadside along the cemetery, maybe you should take over the two cemeteries in Marshall County and, yeah, in Washington Township, and you can take the expense of that. Because that can be put on. I think there's some things that you guys gotta take care of. I'm out of energy.
Okay, cemeteries are a township issue, though. And expense.
You can, there is a spot right in the air. Pioneer Cemeteries, Zero, you know, I don't have to tell you that. I think we try to keep deep enough, we really do. And that's my concern.
You do an admirable job. I know it's right by your house, and I know the family members that you have that are in holding in the cemetery, and thank you for your work.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Vertus.
Have fun.
We always have fun, Vertus.
Vertus, can we move on to the... All right, we'll move on. Thank you. Next item is the adjournment. The next regular session is scheduled for March eighth, twenty sixteen at nine AM. All business to be active on at that session shall be submitted to the County Board of Supervisors and, or the Marshall County Auditor and Recorder's Office or the Board of Supervisors Office by Thursday, March third, twenty sixteen at one PM. There be no further business to come before the board. We are adjourned at ten oh seven.